December the 18th with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up is we have presentations, the Greg Kennedy Service Award to Mr. Roger Goolsbee.
I'd like to ask Veronica Leonard to come forward to help me present and Mr. Roger Goolsbee.
So, for many years now, we have had the Greg Kennedy Community Service Award and some years the award was not presented and we have, the last couple of years, made sure that we present this award to recognize someone who has done above and beyond in our community with long, a long time service in support of our wonderful, great city of Southfield. And the person this year is Roger Goolsbee, who I've had the pleasure of knowing since his children were little and attended Adler Elementary School. Roger was the PTA president at Adler for, I don't know how many years.
Too many to name.
But Roger has four children and after they finished Adler School, Roger didn't give up on Adler. He continued, matter of fact, he's still a volunteer at Adler School. And how many years has that been? Because I've lost track.
Well, when I, my first PTA meeting was 1985 and they told me when I walked in that I was PTA president. I didn't even know it.
So anyhow, that, I really think that Adler was the sort of jumping off point for Roger's activism and participation in the city of Southfield. So Roger is retired, but he worked for 33 years as a journeyman electrician for Chrysler Trenton Engine Plant and he won awards for, as an exemplary employee, but also he co-chaired the plant's Clothe the Child program for over 20 years. And his activities besides PTA include being athletic coach, being part of the Southfield Promise Program, was past secretary, and from 1995 until 2004, Mr. Goolsbee served on the, as a trustee on the Southfield Board of Education. He's lived in the community for 32, 33 years and has worked tirelessly to make Southfield an exemplary community. He's served on the Total Living Commission for four years and for the past two years, he's been the chairman of the Southfield Community Coalition. And I can't forget that also Roger had a turn at being the president of the Martin Luther King Task Force. Roger's done for the task force, he usually gets delegated to do the buttons, the sale of buttons every year. That's been one of his specialties, but also he's had various roles in getting in fundraising for Martin Luther King Task Force and serving in a variety of capacities over the years. We will be having our 33rd Martin Luther King Peace Walk on January 15th and Roger continues to be a vital part of planning that event. So it's with great pleasure that Veronica Leonard, the Chair of the Total Living Commission and I present Roger with the 2017 Greg Kennedy Community Service Award for dedicated service to the city of Southfield. Roger, we'll present you with that. There is a plaque out in the lobby that will have your name on it. It's an, each year when the award is presented, we add another name. So you'll be hanging out in the lobby in portuity. All right?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not going to, I don't know what your time limit is, but you can take a break when you feel like it. But anyway, I want to say thank you to Mayor Cyver, Ms. Leonard, the Total Living Commission and the city of Southfield for honoring me with the Greg Kennedy Community Service Award. I want to thank Krista English for nominating me for this award. I am humble and I graciously accept this award. I would like to also give thanks to my family, friends and other volunteers who have had an impact on my ability to serve where needed. Thanks goes out to my children Roger and Candace who kept me volunteering, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, everything, just kept me volunteering. And I'm truly grateful to my wonderful wife of 40 years, Terry, for encouraging me to continue to serve. For the record, this moment is not about me, but about all the educators, classmates, mentors, coaches and other folks who paved the way by giving countless hours to make lives better for others. Growing up in River Rouge, I had the pleasure of having instructors who would go to the south and help with the voter registration. Little did I know that they were Freedom Riders. I was kind of, I was young, but with examples like those, I don't have a choice. I can't sit home and not volunteer. They did. It is my hope that by receiving this award, it will inspire others to give of themselves. All of us here have walking papers. We know what we should be doing. We need more volunteers, especially in the school system. I am certain that we will have more individuals answer that call. This is very critical. There are never too many volunteers. To quote Winston Churchill, "You make a living by what you get. You make a life by what you give." Once again, thank you for this honor.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make a comment.
I was just going to, one quick comment for the benefit of the audience. The award is adjudicated by the Total Living Commission and that's why Ms. Leonard is here this evening.
I just wanted to make a comment. I met Mr. Goolsbee while running for office in 2015 at Adler Elementary and I have seen him working in action ever since then. And I just want to say to you, Mr. Goolsbee, I think there is no one more deserving for this award. You work so hard and tirelessly. You're just a prime example of servant leadership for your community and I salute you and I say congratulations to you.
Well, I should thank Mr. Goolsbee also. I've known Roger for quite a few years and probably through my Veterans Commission, but he did work tirelessly to get me elected and I want to thank Roger for that.
Roger?
Oh, let me, let me, go ahead.
One more, the photo didn't turn out. I think it's light. Where do you want us to stand?
I'd like, right here. How is this overhead lights? On three, one, two, three. That's better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
Okay, I would like Travis Greer and anyone from G Mar to come forward. I understand they have something for us.
Very wonderful.
G Mar is the, is an organization that is the Greater Metropolitan Area or Association of Realtors. Their headquarters is in Southfield and they, not only, it's a professional organization of realtors, but also G Mar cares about the communities in which its associates work in the real estate industry. And they notified me earlier this year that they have community improvement grants. And so I applied, I think it was in August, and this particular grant was for restoring public art that, from the Northland Collection that the city has and wants to get restored and placed in the community and secured. And so I see the city of Southfield has won $2,500 or being awarded $2,500 in this grant. So we are, this will go again to the Northland Art Fund that we're still, I guess I made to make a shameless plug here, but it's end of the year giving and the Northland Art Fund, although we've, we've reached our initial goal, we're still collecting money because we have art that we want to restore, place and secure. So this will, is a contribution towards that. Travis, if you'd like to come up or anybody else from, maybe you could introduce your member.
I will. Thank you for having us. I'm Karen Greenwood. I'm the 2017 President for the Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors. With me here, I have Jamie Idice, she's your 2018 President. Echual Libit, she's a member of G Mar and Vicki Livernoy, she's our CEO and Travis is Director of Community Affairs. Thank you for the opportunity. We're 8,000 Realtor members strong in Metro Detroit with the largest local association and we're the first association in the United States to have a placemaking grant program that works, works with the government and also communities for outreach projects. We are happy to award seven of them this year and really happy to be part of this project. So on behalf of G Mar and our members, congratulations. Thank you for your time. President Brightwell, thank you very much and, thank you. We're excited, we're excited to see it, so we're excited.
Get a photo up anywhere.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll make sure this gets to accounting in the morning.
Okay, before we proceed further, I want to, we are definitely instituting the no food or beverages in this chamber. There's a sign outside the door that's been there for years. We will be enforcing the no food or beverages in the council chambers immediately. You will be asked to leave with your food and/or beverage. Obviously you may re-enter, but without your food or beverage. This exclude water, just in case you have, H2O is exclude water. And this is, this is not a joke. This is, but we're serious about this. Eating and consuming beverages here, obviously our janitorial staff has picked up bottles and food off the table, but also it detracts from the seriousness of what we're doing here. It detracts from the integrity of the proceedings and we affect the lives of 100 to almost 200,000 people a day by the rules that we make here. And I want to make sure that the message going forward that we are a serious body and that eating detects, eating and beverage, and eating and/or consuming beverages detects from our integrity. Next on our agenda, we have no appointments, we have minutes.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Mr. Frazier?
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October the 23rd, 2017, the joint committee, or the joint meeting of October 24th, 2017, the committee of the whole meeting of November 13th, 2017, the regular meeting of November 20th, 2017, and the committee of the whole, which was conducted as a closed session meeting of November 27th, 2017.
Support?
Moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that the minutes be approved as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. We have consent agenda items A through J and J was an add-on which dealt with, authorized our counselor, I mean our attorney and the police department to start the protocol for the revocation of the liquor license of the bar seven and grill on 12 Mile.
Mr. President, I would like, I would like to move approval of the consent agenda items A through J.
Support?
It's been moved and supported that we approve consent agenda items A through J. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Has been moved. Opposed? No opposition. It's been moved and approved. We approved consent item A through J. Madam Attorney, did you have a concern?
Only that there was no description read of what the items were. Generally that was done just so the members of the public would know.
Right, I'm, this year I'm streamlining this process. We have access to, media and individuals can access these items on their social, on their, if you're at home, you can go, utilize your laptop, your phone to access our meeting agenda items and also the consent agenda items under the clerk, city of Southfield website and looking up the minutes. So that's, this is pretty much just streamlining. On a going forward basis, I will be as transparent as we possibly can, but I will be streamlining quite a few things as we get to them. So the consent agenda item has been approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Focas.
I have a comment to make regarding the consent agenda. I believe that those items should be noticed by the people who are watching on TV who do not have computers. I think that, that each one should be acknowledged as in the past. I think especially J, which is, is letting the people know what we're doing about that bar on, on 12 Mile Road and Telegraph Road, that we are very concerned about anybody breaking the law in the city of Southfield. Having a business here ought to manage it properly or lose their license and that the recommendation for this body is that we give notification of liquor license and to make an ordinance change so that we close them down. And I think that the public has a right to know that as well as these other items. So I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no on the consent agenda.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I did make note of item J and that we did add that with respect to starting the protocol for the revocation of the liquor license for the bar seven and grill on 12 Mile. And we will have discussion on whether or not I will streamline this, in the future will I will streamline this. It is my intent to be transparent and to be as efficiently as we possibly can, given today's modern media, access to electronics and everything that we deal with is on our website under the city clerk's record minutes. But I have, just to explain myself a little bit, I have viewed council meetings of some major cities and what I just did is seem to be customary, wherever I looked as far as they're conducting minutes, conducting meetings, but we will, our next meeting's in January and I will have discussions with the council members and between then and if we decide to change something, I'll change it then. Okay, public hearing?
Through the chair. Our first public hearing is PZR 17-0003, rezoning request of applicant petitioner Scott Riddle to rezone 7.695 acres of land from R2 single family to B2 planned business. There are four parcels that make up the 7.695 acres that located at 27150 West 12 Mile Road on the north side of 12 Mile between Inkster Road and Franklin Road and Northwestern Highway. The property to the north is vacant, property to the east has multiple family, property to the south has residential across 12 Mile Road and the property to the west on Sheridale has single family units. The future land use plan indicates combination of moderate density, single family, regional mixed use and local mixed use for the subject parcels. Current zoning is R2, proposed zoning is B2. And I just want to remind the council that should this rezoning move forward, we'll get into specifics under special use requests and site plan review, but you need to make your decision based on all of the potential uses in the requested district, not on the particular use that we will discuss after this public hearing. The petitioner is here. He might want to make some introductory comments before we go to public hearing. And then afterwards, myself and the petitioner's team will be happy to answer any questions if the council may have.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Aye, and good evening. Scott Riddle, 4160 Valley Forge Road, Bloomfield 48301. And thank you for hearing us this evening. Appreciate it. The rezoning request that we have before you, as Terry has mentioned, is B2. It is, it is and fits within your overall master plan. It is for a banquet and conference center and we have, we'll get into the specifics of the site plan later, but at this point I will, I'd like to just open it up for questions.
And through the chair, just to correct the record, they might intend to use it for a banquet facility, but you have to consider all the potential uses in the B2 district before we get into the specifics.
The public hearing is now open. Sir, I'll give you a name and address, please. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jack Thomas. I live at 29232 Sheridale Street. And before we get started, I wrote all you council members a letter about this, that I'm totally opposed to this development in our neighborhood. We have a concern that we live in a cul-de-sac with one way in and one way out and we have concern about increasing traffic and parking on our neighborhood block, because a lot of people know when you build a hall, a rental hall, people don't like to park and they'll park on the quickest area to get to it so they won't get blocked in. And we concerned about safety there. We have children on the block, we have grand, I have grandchildren that play outside and right now we don't have a concern about traffic. Nobody comes up in the street and my kids are able to sit out, play basketball, run around and with no concerns of traffic. Lately, since we've had this development, we've seen a lot of cars coming in and up and down the road, turning around and heading out and we concerned about that. And also emergency services. When you have a cul-de-sac and it's only one way in and one way out, just like when it snow, we get blocked in. If it's heavy snow, we can, it's a hill climb to get in and out of our neighborhood. You have to climb up to the top of the hill. My wife had to call several times about getting our street plowed, which we normally do. We like the last street to ever get plowed in Southfield and we have concerns about all this. And as I, I don't know if y'all got the letter, received it and read it, but I put all the concerns in there about what we, our neighbors are concerned about, because our whole block is, we don't want the development there. We feel that they have other properties they can pursue that's already zoned. Instead of rezoning a neighborhood, we have a beautiful neighborhood, we got a beautiful community. We concerned about our property taxes, you know, our property values going down if they build this and we can, really concerned about the traffic and the noise. We have, behind us on Northwestern, we have a bar that makes noise all night. We have on Inkster Road, we have a veterinary thing that they have a, some type of machinery that runs all day. And we just concerned about our lifestyle is going to be changed totally and we are totally against this and we hope the city council will help the community out, the small community that sits there. And we not opposed to them building anything, but we know it's other places in Southfield that's already zoned, that they have plenty of empty properties, lots around, which I wrote in my letter to all of y'all where they could relocate to with just as much land. So that's my time and I'm hoping y'all consider and vote in our favor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Public hearing is still open.
One thing I'd like to say is this process seems a little backwards in that we say what we want to say and then they get up here and get to do whatever they want to do and then we don't get to respond. So at some point, maybe that could be reversed. This is from the Southfield website. "The aim of the NRI Neighborhood Revitalization Incentive is to renew Southfield neighborhoods, housing, house by house, to improve and maintain property values for all Southfield residents." The biggest part of this property is, was purchased with NRI money and I'm also the under impression there might be some other legal things happening with properties purchased by the city or by the county, sold to the city and being resold. I don't know if this property is one of those, but I think maybe it should be. You know, I've lived in the city for 30 years. My daughter's lived in, in here for 30 years. She lives across the street from me. We kind of made this our home and wanted to plan on staying there and having, you know, a subdivision all the way around you becomes a big issue. You know, none of the people that are putting these properties in there are Southfield residents. You know, they, and I understand, you know, that the city wants to grow, but I'd rather see housing or something like that down there. The other thing is you have eight residents on the, on the block. Six of those residents are retired and of those six, I'm under the impression that at least three of them probably are not going to be able to, this is their last home. They're not going to be moving anywhere else. This property thing will put a huge burden on them. I'm concerned about the safety for my grandchildren with the amount of traffic. We just saw what happened with a facility that has, you know, 70 people maximum in it. We saw what happened up on the 12 Mile and now we're going to have a place that has 500 people in it. So the, you know, the worry there for that sort of thing in the neighborhood. The noise with, you know, ventilation, things like that, trash pickup, dumpsters, just all the, even, you know, the building that would be going on there would be intrusive to, you know, our neighborhood. So I just ask that, you know, the council looks at this. This is actually our fifth meeting. This is actually our fifth meeting regarding this. Unfortunately, tonight, a couple of the other residents couldn't make it, so that's the way it is. Even the mayor did a, a kind of a, had a meeting with our group, so. But everyone has been against it in the whole, whole block, so just keep that in mind. Wow, right on the dot. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open?
Jonathan Bratman, 22917 South Bellwood Drive, here in Southfield. They make their own point that this is no longer a residential neighborhood. If you look at, at these parcels, they're, the parcels have maybe 30 years ago, 40 years ago, this was a residential neighborhood, but it's not in a residential neighborhood anymore. The parcels on Northwestern are Zone B3. The parcels to the west are Zoned Office. It's not a residential neighborhood anymore. And so, as the broker who's tried to sell this property for five years, you can't get people to try to put a residential development there, because it's not a residential, they can't sell, wouldn't be able to sell those homes. And if you make the density so tight on it, then it loses that nature also. So, really, the, the destiny, once these other parcels started to become commercial, retail, and office, it set forward the ultimate destiny of these other parcels to be commercial. And as far as, they also make our own, the point of the, of the buyer on this is that there's been tremendous outreach, like I've never seen before, to these seven residents. And one of the parcels, Mrs. Justice, is here tonight. The parcel that is just on the east side of Sheridale to the west of where it says R2, that property's under contract. We were able to con, to contract with Ms. Justice, and I'm sure that if we sat down, we could eventually come to an agreement with the people who also own those parcels. So, it's no longer a residential area. We're trying to work with them. They make the point that the noise and the uses all surround them, and for those reasons, I think that the proposed rezoning speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Andrea Rossman, 29235 Sheridale Street, Southfield, Michigan. 30-year resident, lived here my whole life. I was a firefighter for a few years here and just left. But, you know, I used to run on a lot of car accidents and people that were hit. And what I can say is, I'm a runner, I run in our area, and it's unfair for him to say it's not residential, because we live there and it's our home and it's our community. We've got pictures you guys can look at of all of our-
Please give it to the clerk.
It's a huge wildlife population there. It is our community, it is our residents, and we live there. San Marino has won awards for being one of the nicest neighborhoods. And, you know, it's not fair that we were spent surrounded around commercial, and we're kind of tired of it. We are surrounded around bars. We know what happens at some of these bars, there's shootings, it is what it is. One of the conference centers pie right around the corner from us, there was a shooting there. And, I mean, right outside, you know? And so, we know, once it's rezoned, what the possibilities are for what can be built there. And it is our home, we live there. And like that statement, my dad said, you know, the point is to revitalize these neighborhoods. And we are revitalized, we're a nice neighborhood. I run constantly and I'm constantly almost getting hit by cars. I run in Farmington Hills now. The traffic is, goes down to a one lane, right when you pass Inkster Road onto, on 12 Mile. It goes to a one lane. So, for those two lanes to merge into a one lane right in front of our street has caused such issues. And, you know, we don't, there's going to be 500 people at this facility, I mean, you know what that's going to do to the traffic. We can't get out as it is. The construction, I mean, we're going to get a ton of dust there, it's just, it's not fair. And the noise that's going to come, we already have a ton of noise. The property values are going to go down. You know, the biggest thing for me is, you know, I have my kids, I'm a single mom, my kids want to play, you know? And they go, they're going to want to go across the street to San Marino and, you know, they're going to get hit by a car. And you know how many kids I've seen hit, you know how many people I've seen hit by cars? It's real, it happens. And we, I ran on it all the time. This is a very real thing to me and I've seen it. And I just, I get that this has turned into commercial, but it's not. Our street is its own little thing and it is going to be a shame if this is rezoned, because I'm not going to stay here. I mean, this was like, I bought my house here, I lived in the city, worked in the city. I mean, what's going to help, have me buy another house here, you know? I mean, this is, this is a real big deal to us, and I can't imagine any of us are going to stay there if this happens.
Your time is up, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Residents, you know who I am. I've been your independent voice in the city of Southfield for over 30 years. I'm hoping that this council and this administration understands what these residents are saying and that you have some kind of passion in your heart that if this was on your street, in your neighborhood, around the corner from you, you would not want it. Mr. Grossman read the statement about what the NRI stands for. It says "building neighborhoods," not building commercial neighborhoods. Now, Jonathan Bratman talked about the fact that he's been trying to sell this property for five years. Maybe your price per square footage is too high. Maybe you're asking too much money. But just like these people are here fighting for a rezoning request, if you sold it for the right price to the right developer, he may want to build homes and they could come here and fight for a rezoning request for residential, R1 through R4. So, I don't buy all of that. I can tell you the attitudes of two of the people that are here. This probably is not going to work. When the petitioners have bad attitudes and are condescending towards your residents that pay you taxes, that should mean something to you. I'm concerned about the fact that when you do this rezoning, if you do it, that other things will go on in there. A lot of these places wind up having things in there that shouldn't be going on in there. I'm also concerned about the fact, and I read the traffic study, that they said with all the suggestions that they could have to alleviate the problem, it still would not mitigate the traffic concerns. So, if the traffic study that they did says it's not going to work, and they took information from a previous study from 2014, and we know traffic patterns have changed, there's been migration from Southfield, people coming into Southfield, you can't use old data and combine it with new statistics. So, if their traffic study says it's not going to mitigate the problem, none of you up there should vote for subjecting your residents, your tax-paying residents, your on-time tax-paying residents that have not lost their houses to NRI, you should consider their feelings. And I want to ask you a question. You got NRI down here for the next public hearing, is that the house that you bought that you didn't know was in foreclosure and you gave the 25,000 or 26,000 to the person and they fled?
Your time is up. Thank you.
I'd like you to answer the question, too.
Public hearing is still open?
Hello, my name is Najib Atisha. I'm a Commerce Township President. If you'd like my address, I can give it to you.
Yes.
8780 Oak Bee Drive, Commerce Township. I heard the broker mentioned that there was another piece of property that they have under contract. Is that part of this development and which piece of the property is it, is what I would like to know. Thank you.
Public hearing is still open? You have, you would like to comment?
Yeah, yes, please, thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is closed. You can, you can speak, sir.
If you have a question, I'd be happy to clarify.
Well, you can come to the mic and speak and reply to them if you wish.
Thank you, thank you. I was just going to respond if you had a question that I could clarify for the, what is under contract for the purchased property. The parcel on the east side of Sheridale Drive, just to the left, as you look at the screen on, on the B2 or R2, that prop, that property that the pointer is at, is the property that the justices own, and we are currently under contract with them, so we are purchasing that parcel.
Public hearing is closed. Council, what is your pleasure? Mr. Chairman? Oh, go ahead.
What are the other uses under B2?
Be happy to read them into the record. So, uses permitted in the proposed B2 Planned Business District include, but are not limited to the following: medical offices and clinics, banks and similar financial institutions, libraries and government office buildings, post offices, private clubs or lodges, nursery school and daycare centers, photographic studios, establishments which perform personal services, stores of a generally recognized nature, retail nature, restaurants and carry-out restaurants when attached to or located within a shopping center, and accessory structures used as customarily incidental to the above permitted uses. Uses subject to special use approval include theaters, assembly halls, concert halls, and similar places of assembly, open-air retail sales, arcades with a minimum of 100 gross square feet, hotels, motels, freestanding restaurants and carry-out restaurants. Now, all of the special land use has to come back for specific special land use approval. That's why the banquet facility is listed as a special land use. That's a second, separate public hearing.
Okay. And one other question on the traffic. The traffic is the, that's coming out onto 12 Mile, will they still be allowed to turn right? Because, or is it going to be directional, where it can only turn left? I'm sorry, can you turn left or will it be only turning right?
Well, I, we, there, the traffic engineer consultant is here, and I prefer they answer that question.
Okay.
And any questions you have on traffic?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, if, if you would have your traffic consultant come up and answer them.
Yes, I'd like Lauren Warren, who's from WSP USA, to come up to the podium, and I think she can directly respond to your question.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lauren Warren, WSP, Michigan. I'm a traffic engineering consultant. Would you like my personal address or business address?
Business.
Business address?
Business address, yeah.
Uh, 500 Griswold Street, Detroit, Michigan, 48226.
And if, if I could, through, through the chair to Ms. Taylor, how about we have her just do an executive summary of the study before she answers your specific question, if that's okay?
Sure, I can do that. Yeah, I believe you all have received a copy, too, and if you have that, I've brought it along as well. We did pull data from a previous road commission study from 2014. It is, it is typical to use traffic volumes within the past five years. That is an acceptable practice within the business. So, 2014 to 2017, that would be a practical starting point for what we, what we would use. We typically study the parcel in question and then the adjacent intersections. So, in this case, we studied those on Inkster Road, Inkster at 12 Mile, Inkster up at Northwestern, also 12 Mile at Franklin, which is kind of like that weird little piece that jogs down, and then 12 Mile at Northwestern. So, as we saw, the data, data was collected. The typical practice in a traffic impact study is to model existing conditions without any future build or future growth or future developments. In this case, everything under existing conditions is operating at an acceptable level of service. So, when you think of level of service, you think of that as a letter grade in school, A through F. Ds are acceptable. Your parents might not think so, but Ds are acceptable in the traffic world, particularly with high congested areas or cities. Ds are, are one of those acceptable things. So, under the existing conditions, you'll see that only a couple intersections are actually operating at level of service D, the rest of them are at A, B, or C. And that just basically is a level of congestion, and there, there's a table in the report and I can, I can answer any questions further on the level of service if you have them. The next step in the traffic impact study is to model future growth with, with, uh, future without any development. So, we apply a growth factor that is acceptable to the metro Detroit region, that is directly from the SEMCOG, which is the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, they're the planning organization for all of metro Detroit. Their acceptable growth rate is a 1% per year. That's based on everything that's happening within the region, future growth, future development, travel patterns, et cetera. So, we apply that. And then the next step is to look at what the rezoning would be and the, the traffic generated from this particular proposal. So, we used data from the ITE Trip Generation Manual, and there aren't specific, that's a Institute of Traffic Engineers, they put out a manual that does all sorts of trip generation predictions for different land uses. There is not a banquet facility land use development within that manual. So, our group decided to take the worst-case scenario and count the number of traffic spaces available on the facility. So, the number of traffic spaces is 329 spaces. 29 of those is designated for employee parking, which would be arriving at a different peak than your guest. And the, also, I should mention that the typical practice when you're looking at trips is there's an inbound and an outbound rate. In addition to that, they also typically model peak hour. So, an AM peak hour, usually a 7 to 9 a.m., and then a PM peak hour, like a 4 to 6, 4 to 7 kind of range. And one thing to note with this development is that there's not anticipated to be a lot of heavy inbound or outbound traffic during the peak hour. You're not going to have 300 vehicles showing up at 7 a.m. or 4 p.m. A lot of things happen outside of those normal, normal ranges. Let me see. So, once we develop the, the trips and we used 300 trips, which would be the trips for the guests, those are distributed amongst the network in existing travel patterns that we see along the network. Kind of looking at who would be coming from the south, the east, and the north, and the west. And you can see in the report, there is a total distribution of all the trips. We also did, and then you kind of re, basically relook at all of the traffic with the development and run the level of service and the analysis. At that point, you can also look at any mitigations that would be suggested based on the proposed development. Under the future conditions with the development, so this is a year 2020, this is with the growth added, and the anticipated opening of the bank, of the facility, all of the intersections within the study area still operate at an acceptable level of service, that would be level of service A through D. And we also did look at the driveway, I think that was how this whole question started. Currently, the driveway is all movements in and out, it's one, one lane in, one lane out. There could be potential queuing on the, on the development site, but a lot of times, these things kind of have a rolling ending where, you know, people don't all leave, 300 people don't all leave at the same time. So, I think, there are a couple, a couple mitigations that were mentioned, but to the previous speaker's position who did not say her name, there are no mitigations that are not feasible, particularly looking at the little Franklin spew off, there's some tight intersection spacing there, which I'm sure we're all, all aware of, and some other potential pieces that could be mitigated through traffic signal timings, which are very easy changes. And actually, most of the signals in this area operate under the road commissions' SCATS program, which is basically a fancy way to say they're adaptive, and they adjust to whatever traffic is happening. So, they're kind of doing that in a real-time manner, and so, on the- And so, on the, to actually go in and reprogram the controller really isn't necessary, so.
If I could just add, any specific traffic turning in and out will be handled under the special land use site plan portion. But I wanted you to know that the planning commission thought that traffic was an important issue, did request a traffic impact statement. It's important to know that they took the worst-case scenario for development, and it's still operating at level of service that's acceptable. There's some recommendations when we get into the site, specific recommendations for acceleration, deceleration, timing of lights, and so forth. But that typically will come after working with the road commission and after the development takes place, so that they can monitor it over a year's time to see actually if and what needs to be done specifically.
And I see in the report here also that if this is approved, traffic will be evaluated after the conference center is open and adjustments.
As far as traffic single timing, but it is our recommendation that the acceleration/deceleration lane, if approved by the road commission, be installed at the time of construction. So, that'll help alleviate the stop and turning in and out of the facility. But again, that's a more site-specific issue that we'll get into more detail later on.
Okay.
And just so that I'm, if I remember this correctly, because it was presented when I was on the planning commission, there is only one entrance, and that is off 12 Mile.
That's correct. It's, Traffic Engineering 101 is to put it in the center, equal distance from other potential conflict points on the north side of 12 Mile. Then there's a required offset for any driveways on the south side. But it was clear that the planning commission didn't want any access onto Sherrodale itself.
Correct.
And that there is no other access other than the divided median on 12 Mile.
Okay.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
With your, with the traffic study, did, with all the changes that we could possibly make to this site, would that alleviate the traffic problems on 12 Mile?
With all the, what, potential changes?
So, with adding the deceleration lane and things like that, would that alleviate the traffic, the current traffic problems that people are?
I mean, you have congestion on 12 Mile. I don't think that that's the question. I don't think, the decel lane would basically prevent cars from stopping in a active travel lane to make a lower speed maneuver. So, basically, you would pull off into that decel lane and be able to make your maneuver and allow the traffic on 12 Mile to be free flow.
If I could, from my understanding, and I'm just-
And I only studied what happened with the banquet center. I know you guys are still kind of evaluating this in a bunch of different manners, so.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but just in layman terms, the road commission of Oakland County looks at their signalization about every three years or at the request of a specific development, and they make adjustments in the timing of the lights and signals and turn lanes and so forth based on the overall volume today and then projection. And they come back and will monitor that on roughly a three-year cycle and make adjustments, unless there's a specific request to make an adjustment. So, if this development takes forth and there needs to be additional adjustments, that that will, you know, can be either requested after that one-year period or at the next three-year review. The road commission will tell you that this is a large-volume mile road that's designed to handle the traffic. And the level of service is simply, you might have to wait 10 seconds to get through an intersection. That would be a level of service A. Then you lose another 10 seconds to a level of service B. And again, I'm oversimplifying a little bit, but when you start having to wait 60 seconds or longer and only one or two cars gets through, that might be a failing level of service that would be adjusted. So, the gist of the report is it's functioning within an acceptable level of service. This added increased traffic based on projections of growth and the proposed use would still operate at an acceptable level of service. And that's all we can do right now until we actually see how things work.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, I'm going to ask Ms. Taylor. I heard a lot of data, but I don't think she answered your question.
No.
Whether you can only turn right coming out, or will you be able to turn left?
I did say that right now, the driveway is one lane in, one lane out with all turning movements allowed now.
Turning?
All turning movements are allowed in and out of the facility.
Okay.
And turn left.
And I was letting that go because I thought that was going to be on the next?
And I think, yeah, that might be more site-specific.
Site-specific. Am I correct in that? Okay, because I do have some more questions, but.
Okay, the traffic study you did, this is a destination point. So, the traffic will be clumped, if you will, by the activity that, in the center. It would seem to me that would be very difficult to decide what the traffic level is going to be on, especially on 12 Mile Road. I don't, I'm not so concerned about the intersection of Inkster and 12 Mile, or Franklin and 12 Mile, because cars turn in and out of driveways going west. So, the traffic normally will, would, and as the planner said, 12 Mile is designed to handle a lot of traffic. So, I'm not really concerned, but it would seem to me very difficult to even guess what the traffic class is going to be, if it's going to be A, B, C, or D at this convention center, or conference center, at any given time, because the events there will be, sometimes they'll be in the morning, sometimes the afternoon, sometimes at night, or in the evening, I should say. So, it would seem to me an impossible study to decide what it would be, like throwing darts at a dartboard.
Okay. If I understand right, you're saying that it would be a guess to understand how the traffic would operate. Let me try to tell you how I figured this out. So, with the trip generation of 300 trips, we applied that to the worst-case scenario, peak hour, which is the PM peak hour in this case.
Okay.
All traffic is analyzed within a one-hour timeframe, so the model runs for one hour. And it will show you how the traffic operates within that one hour.
Okay.
And there's also a, what we call a peak hour factor that is applied to that, which determines basically the arrival rate. And so, we can apply factors within our models. There's highly sophisticated software that runs all of this that would say, we have this, and they're all coming now. This whole area probably has pretty high peak hour factors if we pulled up the model. So, I guess, to your answer, to your question, we took the worst-case scenario of 300 trips. We took the worst-case traffic on the existing network, and it's still coming out acceptable level of service, so.
When you say acceptable, what grade do you give it?
Are you asking about the driveway in particular?
When you take the, when you take the worst-case scenario in the worst, at the peak period, going into this center, what is the grade for, on 12 Mile Road?
The grade at 12 Mile Road at the entrance to the facility would be a level of service A, because it's a free-flow movement.
Even in the worst-case scenario, will it still be A?
Yes, because you haven't added any sort of stop sign or traffic signal to halt the traffic there.
Okay.
The only people that are stopping would be coming out of the banquet facility.
But coming out, coming out would, really wouldn't worry, wouldn't probably bother the traffic on 12 Mile.
Correct.
It would stack up from the parking lot to 12 Mile.
Correct.
And then people would get in whenever they get an opening. The last question I have is, the deceleration lane from the east going into the, how many cars will that handle? And I don't know if you know that answer, maybe the-
Well, that would also be a free-flow movement, so you wouldn't have a stacking like you would normally have at a traffic signal where you'd have a right-turn lane. Those cars would just simply move off into that lane to make their right-turn maneuver. So, we don't anticipate any stacking on the entrance to the development, because they would just drive into a parking lot, so.
Except for the fact that as the parking lot fills up, cars won't flow in as smoothly as when the first cars get there.
I'm not a parking lot designer.
I understand that.
But I do believe-
Or a traffic flow designer.
I do believe this might be more of a site development question, but there is typically a standard lane along the center of it that would allow traffic to flow in freely and not back up onto the main line, and then people can circulate within the facility itself to look for a parking.
All right. You can answer my question. That's it.
Mr. Fakasi.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I listened to the individuals that live in subdivision that were at the one street. You can sit down. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. But I live in Green Trees, and we have two entrances out to 12 Mile Road only. And between Evergreen and Lasha Road, we have three schools, two churches, a park, two gas stations, and three office buildings, a shopping center, and a bank. It's all coming off of 12 Mile. We all have access on the 12 Mile Road, and I have absolutely no problem getting out of my subdivision. And I think, when I seen this plan come before us, I looked at how much traffic would come out to 12 Mile Road. And I see the beautiful architecture that's done, the trees and landscaping, and I sometimes wish that we had had something like this between Evergreen and Lasha Road. But I don't. But I don't have that serious traffic problem at all. Just answered the traffic problem. You have a little bit when Farber School lets out across the street from our sub. But I'd like to also mention that the home right at the corner of Mary Crest, I'm sorry, Monterey and 12 Mile Road just sold for twice as much as they were asking. And it's a ranch home, and it sits right on the corner of Monterey and 12 Mile Road, right across from Farber School.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Public hearing is closed. No, public hearing is closed. The public hearing is closed, ma'am. Counsel, you have any more questions or comments? Mr. Mandelbaum.
With the, the home that is singled out, is there plans to demolish that home? Should this go forward? Or that home be staying there?
Home will not stay there.
And will anything go in its place, or will it just be?
No. Nothing will go in its place except to create additional 60-foot buffer landscaping between the residence and the development.
Thank you.
Right, counsel? Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve PZR 17-0003 for rezoning.
I support it. All right, it was moved by Mr. Frazier and supported by Mr. Fakasi that we approved PZR 17-003. What is your pleasure, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
All right, we have five approvals and two opposed.
You don't?
Madam Clerk, you want to?
No.
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Morris?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Rezoning adopted.
It's been approved. Introduction of ordinance number-
Yep. I move that we introduce ordinance number 1687.
Support. It's a move by Mr. Frazier and supported by Mr. Fakasi that we introduce ordinance number 1687. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Roll call.
We're going to do a roll call.
Cruz?
No.
Right, Fakasi?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Morris?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Introduction of the ordinance number 1687.
We now move to site plan PSP.
I'll introduce this.
Excuse me?
I'll introduce the next public hearing.
The next public hearing.
I'm sorry, okay.
So, the next public hearing is to consider the special use request of the petitioner Scott Riddle for the development of a conference center and banquet facility with associated parking located at 27150 West 12 Mile Road. Part and parcel to the special land use is a site plan review request. So, we're, and that's for consideration of a 20,000 gross square foot conference center and banquet facility. We'll introduce them both at the same time. You'll have to vote on them separately, but the site plan is tied with the special land use. I'm going to just do a general overview and then let the petitioner get into the site-specific presentation. Now that the parcel has been at least introduced for rezoning to B2, we have one large parcel now with the appropriate B2 zoning. The, this is the detailed site plan with one entrance midway on 12 Mile on the north side with an acceleration and deceleration lane, and it's bifurcated by a median to separate traffic coming in and out of the site. The building is located as far east as feasible to be, as far away from the residence on Sherrodale. Every effort was kept to preserve as much greenery and existing natural vegetation as possible. The two existing ponds will be cleaned up and used as an amenity to the site. And since the property slopes to the southwest, this area has been dedicated for retention, stormwater feature. An additional buffer setback has been allocated to the front and along the west property line to help further screen the development. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the architect to get into site-specific details and make his presentation before we go to the public hearing. And then, again, we'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing for the special land use.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Terry.
In case I want to use the clicker.
Okay. All right. Well, we can keep it right on the site plan to start with. Again, thank you for hearing our proposed plan development tonight, council members. With me, and I'll introduce the team that's in attendance tonight so that you know, you've already heard from several of them, but let me make clear for your purposes as to who's in attendance and with me. Dr. Harshna Krishna is here. He's the development owner, or will be. Joe Zarenscheck is here from Union Realty.
That time, Joe.
Jonathan Bratman, who you've heard from before, is the realty broker for Rose Rostowski, property owner, partial. Lauren Warren, who you've heard from before from WSP, answering some questions on the traffic impact study. And then George Astraski is also here from Noack and Faust, the engineers who did the landscaping plan and the site plans. Okay? Yes. I think I did, Rose Rostowski's here as well. I think I, I thought I had mentioned her. But if I didn't, I beg her pardon. I'd like to begin tonight really just summarizing a chronological timeline for you so you know that we've been at this for a little while, and not to give you the gory details of everything behind the curtain, at least share with you the timeline and the activity of the development team over the course of time. To start with, the team was really established between Dr. Krishna, who had the vision and the idea to look for a location within Southfield, because Southfield's the gateway to southeast Michigan, to make it convenient for a conference and banquet center that he would look to develop that would initially thought was to- that he would look to develop, that would initially thought was to provide and facilitate a venue for professional healthcare association, trade groups, and the one with groups of doctors or physicians and whatever, but to facilitate a venue that be able to house and provide conference facilities and banquet facilities to those kinds of groups. At the same time as this thing developed, obviously, we're looking to use the facility and open it up for the public use as well. So, not just strictly for the healthcare industry. We had early meetings with Terry in the planning department, Mr. Crowe, in the planning department, to just initialize the concept of what we were thinking of, but more importantly, find out from the city as to what your requirements are of us, and to make sure that we understood the steps that we needed to go through in order to comply with your ordinance requirements and so forth, and establish some type of timeline. We started that team back in November of 2016, so even before then, I know Jonathan, Joe, and Dr. Krishna were in kind of the early planning stages of what they could do potentially with this parcel of property. We began a, we began to do a reach out and to invite city members, members of the city, to the residents both in, on Sherridale Street, as well as San Marino across the street, and to Pilots Cove resident members to come to India Flavors on, on, on. Orchard Lake, thank you. I just drew a blank real quick. On Orchard Lake Road, which is owned by Dr. Krishna and operated by Dr. Krishna, and not so much to have them, I mean, we fed him and so forth, but it was really just a meet and greet and to understand and share with them kind of the concept of the idea of a banquet and conference center at this location. And to not necessarily solicit their input or approval at the time, but really just to get some feedback and to see what their initial reaction might be to something like this. But we did that just so they could get to know us a little better and for us to get to know them a little bit better and open up some dialogue and communication. We created some initial concept images so that you could see some ideas, rough as they were at the time, as to what we had in mind at that point. We then introduced the concept to, of the banquet and conference center, to the city council back in March at a study discussion session meeting. After, after that meeting, which at the time, the council gave us basically the, not approval, but the nod to move forward that they were in favor of, but that at the time, we then made, Dr. Krishna made, a significant investment as we began to hire our engineers for the traffic impact study and do the site plan, to do the topography survey, to do the wetland study, to do the tree study, and all the other requirements that are mandated by the requirements for a planning department in the middle of some concept plans. We actually did a step, we went a step further beyond what was required of us, and we actually did some soil testing and soil boring testing on the, on the site, so we could, we could know upfront whether or not the site could be developed or redeveloped into something other than, for a conference and banquet center. We then continued to reach out to residents and to elicit their, I guess, feedback and constant communication. And then we submitted our applications in the spring to planning department to, for the rezoning, for the special land use, and for site plan approval. We were then, and then we were, we submitted our applications so that we could be put on the Planning Commission July 26th agenda. At that Planning Commission public hearing, we were surprised at that time at the number of Sherridale residents who came out and voiced their opposition or their objections. We took the opportunity at that point, after that meeting, to actually go into the pavilion and discuss with them one-on-one and as a group, to more clearly identify what their concerns were, listen to what their objections are, and try to find some objective way that we could alter our design to accommodate what they were asking for. More on that to come. At that point, too, we also provided traffic, the executive summary traffic impact study report to each of the residents that provided us a email address, so that they could not only read it themselves, but that they could share it with others if requested. The follow-up step to that was after we identified what we could do to respond to their comments and objections. We held a meeting on August 6th here at City Hall, and thank you for the use of your conference room. But we brought in some food and a little bit of soda and tried, made, I think, a fairly good attempt at trying to share with them what we had heard as their stated concerns were, how and what we could have done to alter the design, to mitigate or to accommodate their reactions. We then were placed on the Planning Commission public hearing agenda on, for October 25th. And at that agenda, or at that meeting, we received two of the three approvals for the, we received approvals that evening for the rezoning, the special land use, and it was tabled for the site plan at that time. We made some additional revisions based on, again, resident input and their comments, and we went back to Planning Commission public hearing on November the 15th and received site plan approval at that time. We have consistently been as transparent as we can be to all parties. I think Terry hopefully would agree that we have been in conversation and in constant communication with the planning department when needed to gain their direction, input, and make sure that we were on course, that we reached out, continued reaching out to residents. You've heard this evening that we are under contract with the one parcel of property that is probably the most impacted and affected by this potential redevelopment or development. And, and we've, we've also been in contact with any adjacent property owner regarding whether it's residential or even commercial. What I'd like to do now is summarize some of the highlights of what changes we've made to the design to accommodate, and this is really due to residential input and comments. Initially, we had a 60-foot tree buffer, as Terry's talked about, surrounding the property. This is to basically make sure that there was a natural barrier between the 12 Mile, Sherridale, Pilots Cove residents to the, to the development. We not only agreed to do the 60-foot tree buffer, but from their comments, we've actually are looking to maintain the natural vegetation that's there because we want minimal impact on wildlife, as I think one of the residents brought up before. The area that we're developing, for the most part, is open space area right now. Not to say that some old dead trees would be coming down, but we're gonna be adding probably more trees than certainly we're taking away. We've also made the concession to, if we need to, for permanent screening year-round, that outside the tree canopy, that if we needed to plant some evergreens to have sightline interruption between the residence and the development, we've offered that as well. We've made concessions on our hours of operation to mitigate being open and having loud noises emit from the parking lot after hours at late night. Our revised hours now are Monday through Sunday, starting no earlier than 8:00. And on Monday through Thursday, we're closing by 10:00 PM. On Friday, Saturday, we're closing by 11:30. And on Sunday evenings, we're closed by 10:30, to accommodate residents' concerns and their input, and from their input. We've provided, regarding noise and security, which is one of the topics that's been brought up again, again, we've listened to the residents, and we are now offering to make sure that as guests leave the conference and banquet center, they immediately get to their vehicles and, and leave the site, that we will, we were gonna provide 24-hour security, third-party security guards, to make sure that guests get to their vehicles and not linger on the lot or have after-hour, I don't know, loud noises emitting from the parking lot. We've insulated, we double insulated the walls we're planting on this, on this conference center. We're providing an air block and a large vestibule area, so that any noise that's happening on the interior does not get transmitted to the exterior of the building. We have a photometric lighting plan for the site that is gonna be security-level lighting only, not your typical retail strip center with a lot of heavy light or white light out there glaring across property lines. Our photometric shows that our security-level lighting, there will be 0.0 light level at the property line. Okay? So, we're focused just on concentrating it for the security of the parking lot and driveways. We've lowered the building height to 35 feet to make it less tall, obstrusive to the residents. We have also, as Terry had mentioned, the two existing ponds that are on the site that we believe are spring-fed will be aerated and will be incorporated as natural landscaping water features on the property, including the retention basin to the southwest corner of the property, so that it looks like it's in keeping with the natural vegetation that exists there currently. The last, after the last Planning Commission meeting, from resident input, we have taken it to heart, and we added at that time what you see before you tonight on tonight's site plan, and that is the de-acceleration acceleration lane. We think that's gonna do a number of things to alleviate some of the residents' concerns. One, we think it's gonna, it's gonna push back our entrance to a two-lane boulevard entryway, so there's two lanes of entering the site, and there's two lanes exiting the site. It pushes it back 12 and 1/2 feet. It allows for people to accelerate, de-accelerate coming onto the site. We are looking at a sign of some type that will initially indicate to, to traffic, to our guests, that their, that the de-acceleration lane is at their next, at the next right or next entrance or to the right. So, we're gonna try to give them some indicating cues to allow them to make sure they use the de-acceleration and not interrupt any of the flow on 12 Mile Road. We use the acceleration lane to assist those turning out onto 12 Mile Road via the, and going west. There is a center lane, a fifth lane, in the center of 12 Mile that is used for both left and right-hand turns. We believe that because of that, a de-acceleration acceleration lane, it's gonna help and assist some guests getting to go east on 12 Mile, be able to pull out into that turn lane and then merge into traffic as it is, as it opens up. We think, too, that by promoting the fact with a de-acceleration acceleration lane, that this is the entrance to the site, and it is the only entrance to the site, which will be highly visible, easily marked and demarcated as the entrance to the banquet and conference facility, that it will mitigate or minimize any chance of guests pulling into either Pilots Cove prior to the entrance to this or to Sherridale Street. So, I can't say that we're gonna eliminate entirely, but if anything, we've enhanced our chances greatly by having this de-acceleration acceleration lane. And we're 200 feet from San Marino, so it will not have, should not have any impact on, on their ability to get in and out of, onto 12 Mile. The time it's taken over the last, over a year to reach tonight is really critically important in our minds and really necessary to make this plan development even better for the city. As a development team member, I want to thank, I would like to thank Terry and your staff for helping guide us through this process. I want to thank, I want to thank Mark Adams from Oakland County, who is in support of this project and was there at the March meeting and the study meeting with the city council. I'd also like to thank Mr. Leibowitz, who owns the commercial property to our northeast, who's in support of this project. I'd like to, I'd like to also thank Rose Bristowski for her support of this project as a property owner, but also for having the patience of an angel. I'd also like to thank the San Marino, the Pilots Cove, and even the Sherridale residents, providing us their comments. As harsh as some of the times they may be, I don't look at the tone as much as I look at what they're telling us, and I, I look to try to accommodate them as best we can, because I think in the end, with the impact that they've had with their comments, we've actually made this a better development project. Supposed. And at that point, I'll take questions. Public hearing?
Be appropriate to get the public hearing first and then go to questions.
Public hearing is now open. Please give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Andrea Rosman, 29235 Sherridale Street, Southfield, Michigan. No disrespect, but this is really painful, the way this process works. I mean, I work in the justice system, and it is painful to, when your livelihood is on trial, to have to listen to someone else who obviously is being paid to give you this information and us not be able to come back with facts. You know, I just want to let that be known. As far as the traffic goes with this property, I don't know how many of you have driven past that area, but it is very congested as it is. I used to live on 12 Mile Lasher area, and kind of where you were speaking of, it's not even comparable. We are completely surrounded by these structures, and the only area we have is just south of us, which is San Marino. So, we are literally this little cul-de-sac with a little bit left of, you know, peace, and that's all we got. So, this is gonna make a huge difference. And I understand it looks beautiful, but it's not. I mean, and to say that they're gonna put up more trees than take down, you can look at this and tell that's not true. It's completely wooded area for the most part. That traffic right at Inkster goes down to two lanes, and I don't know how the road commission plans on extending that area to a two-lane road that is the only way that this ever can make the traffic better. There's no way a de-escalation lane is gonna do anything. We have a lane right after we turn out that's a turn lane. It does nothing. It's completely congested all the time. It's worse than where I used to live on 12 Mile Lasher. So, I mean, it goes from a two-lane to a one-lane. There's absolutely nothing that a road commission can do, and she can come up here, and she does a good job of making it all sound great, but I'm very smart, and I can tell you, it's not gonna work. And we are gonna suffer, and we are gonna move. And, and I understand that, you know, we're here, you know, bring money to the city and make things beautiful, but it is beautiful right now. And this is all we have left. San Marino was one of the award-winning, you know, neighborhoods. I just can't believe that they're willing to put something right across from it. It's not gonna be, it's not safe. Our kids are gonna be coming out of there all the time. It's just, it's not safe. And I just can't believe that this road study, if I, I don't feel smart, because I didn't hire someone. I didn't hire attorney. I didn't hire a road commission expert to have the other side of this, and God, I wish I would have. I just had no idea that this would go through. It just seems to make no sense. So, you know, I appreciate, I just, I wish this process would change, honestly. It's not right, how this, and we get three minutes. They've stood up here for how long and spoke, it's not right.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open. Please give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Name is Jack Thomas, live at 29232 Sherridale. And Ms. Tell, I'm gonna answer the question, you cannot turn left. They asked you, asked them, they didn't give you the answer. They went all around it. But you cannot turn left. Only day you can turn left is on a Sunday afternoon, everybody finished with church. Usually, when we come out on Sherridale, through any time of day through the week, we have to go right up Inkster Road, down Northwestern, to get back. When the other councilman said his area is nice, it's eight lanes going every way. My neighbor just told, we go down two lanes going into Farming Hill, traffic is at that light all day. And if you've ever been over there, you're gonna sit there for 20 minutes. With this facility, you're gonna sit there even longer. And we have concern about emergency vehicles getting to our street if something happened. Fire, if this thing let out, we're gonna be trapped. And I need, y'all didn't consider that at all. Y'all just asked about traffic. No emergency services to get to this area to say to these people if something happened in their area. Because the. in their area because the traffic is going to be horrible and y'all know that. And I know they talk about the little lane that's going to go in there. Think about it. Everywhere you go, even with your GPS, you pass the place, you turn on the street next to it, you go up, you turn around to try to get back to the place. So, don't act like they're going to turn right in it. You know that. They've never been there before, they're going to pass it here, Sheridale, oh, we passed it. And they're going to flip around on our street. And we're going to be, it's going to be miserable for the residents there, but we thank y'all for not thinking about the emergency things that's going to happen to us as a public and a resident of Southfield.
Public hearing is still open. Give us your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Residents, you know who I am and I don't think I need to identify myself. This is really sad. This is really sad. Close your eyes for 30 seconds. Put this development on your street, in the back of your house, to the side of your house. Then open your eyes and say, can I turn and leave my house? Can I avoid the people that will be participating with this development? I want you to explain to the public, since you're so into transparency, what is the NRI's affiliation with this project? You've got the young lady's name and you've got NRI. You never did answer the question, is NRI involved in this because of the house that you guys thought you were purchasing and you didn't know it was in foreclosure, something about $25,000 or $26,000 and the person left? There is a concern and you heard it from a resident that lives on the street about emergency vehicles. Now, if you think this is going to be such a hot seat, hot seat development and you think it's going to work and they won't be affected, make their day and my day and put it in an agreement that if anything happens and an emergency vehicle can't get to one of those homeowners, that these developers and you guys will be responsible. Automatic payday, since you think that it's so hot, you have not considered what they've said. And I'm going to talk to you, Mr. Brightwell, your attitude is horrendous. You are doing nothing but micromanaging based on the fact that you were in corporate America, Michigan bail. Roger Goosby and Mike aren't the only ones that helped you campaign. Me and my husband worked diligently on your campaign and I regret every day that I worked on your campaign. Never again. You said you was going to be a numbers man? Put the numbers together with this traffic study, with their quality of life, what they paid for their house and tell me what the figures say. You can't even be a numbers man about Northland. So, you fabricated to me, my husband, and all the people we got to vote for you. Vote for a numbers man who can audit and check the figures. You ain't checking nothing but Cyver's agenda.
Public hearing is still open.
Charles Rossman, 29200 Sheridale or OPA. I must say, I'm kind of disappointed with the process. You had all the residents come up here to a person, everyone said they didn't want this and you still went, went ahead with it. That said, it sounds like it's a done deal, so I guess we just throw up our hands and then we'll end up having to move. So, you're going to lose some residents here. You know, the other thing is, once this is all done, if things don't go as planned, I mean, they can put anything else that was mentioned in this property. So, I mean, there's, there's that to consider. I want to compliment you. You did a great job. You did. You've got to, got to admit, you did a good job here. But, you know, if this does go through, I want to know if on the wall, on the north side there, is there going to be a wall? Because at some point with a facility like this, there's going to be dumpsters and things like this on the property and just to avoid children walking through the property or people from the property walking north into the neighborhood, I wonder if that's something that's being considered. Also, they had made some offers for noise abatement money for windows or trees or something to keep the, the noise down, construction noise, banquet facility noise. I wondered when that might become available to the residents because probably the construction would be the biggest part of that. And once again, you know, the, just, just with the process here, I guess I'm a little bit disappointed. You have unanimously, the residents said they didn't want it and it just obviously doesn't matter what the people want. It comes down to what the city thinks they want to do to pay everybody salaries and, and get more tax base from that way. It doesn't have anything to do with the people or the properties. Longtime residents, I'm here 30 years, Jack's here 30 years. We have another gentleman back here who doesn't want to talk, but he's been here 30 years. My daughter's been here 30 years. So, you've got 120 years of, of people living in this city and this is what we get for our, for being loyal residents. So, you know, good luck.
Public hearing is still open.
Joseph Zrencheck, I live at 8834 North Christine in Brighton, Michigan. We have a meeting every month, Dr. Krishna, Scott, Jonathan, the engineers and I, and we always say, what did-
I'm sorry, can you talk into the mic, please? Can't hear you.
Oh. We have a meeting every month, Dr. Krishna, Scott, Jonathan, the engineers and I, and we say, you know what that last meeting they mentioned about traffic? What could we possibly do? We've had the study and the study says it's okay. We said, would it be even better if we had in the acceleration, de-acceleration lane? And we got a feedback, yes, it would be. Well, we also hear that they don't like the fact that our building, we wanted it first 45 feet tall, so let's make it shorter. Can we make it shorter? We asked the engineers, we asked the architects, yes, you can make it shorter, you can make it less height. We at one time thought of 23,000 square foot in our building, but we've made it smaller. We had to, because we had to double insulate the walls, we had to put in insulation in the vestibule so that our building wouldn't, would be virtually soundproof on the outside. We offered the residents, we'll pay for you thermal windows if that, you think will make your life a little bit, you know, less noisy from us. And we never got feedback from that, so we went with the more expensive, let's double insulate our walls. We've tried and tried to accommodate and accommodate. We started this whole process out inviting them to meet us and so they know what we're about. We started this process to make it a site for medical conferences and then people were looking at us cross-eyed and said, you're right. If people want to have their wedding reception here or have their anniversary party, we should do that because we are in Southfield, a city that embraces everyone. We have been trying to embrace everyone in this deal. We're not hateful people and that's all I wish to add to my, and I'm not going to insult anyone. Thank you.
Public hearing is still open. Seeing no one, public hearing is now closed. Counsel, Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you. From the minutes on August the 9th, the question that I had originally asked was about the left turn coming out of the facility. On the minutes it asked on, it doesn't have a page number, but from the minutes on the 9th, the number four, it says, "The proposed use must be such character that the vehicular traffic generated will not have an adverse effect or detrimental to the surrounding land uses of the adjacent thoroughfares." Going down to the response, it says that you did have the study and everything was okay there, but it was based on the volume of thresholds for a full width right turn deceleration lane into the development in both the AM and PM peak hours for traffic going westbound on 12-mile. So, my question was, would you be willing or are you considering making that a right turn only? Because if you tried to go left coming out of there, I'm speaking from experience, the residents are correct in what they're saying. I work at 11-mile and 12, and Inkster, I come up to 12 in Inkster and make that right turn. And I'm making a right turn and I have to sit there because traffic does go down in lanes. So, the traffic is bottlenecked there. If you do not allow that left turn, that will eliminate, and safety is number one for me. Residents are completely true in what they're saying. It is very difficult and I know even if you're having doctors, conferences, businesses, whatever is going to be, the traffic coming out of there, some people are going to want to turn left. If you make that where there's, they cannot turn left, it would eliminate a lot of problems, a lot of traffic accidents. The project itself is beautiful, the landscaping, everything is beautiful, but safety is first for me. And I can just see that because sometimes just turning right, you have to sit there a while because it goes down in lanes. I'm just saying what I see every day.
Okay.
The deceleration lane does help, it will, but going left, I don't see how that's going to help a whole lot because you're going to back up traffic for the people coming off Sheridale if they want to turn because they've got to sit there that much longer to get out. I understand that because I see it. So, I, that, my question was, will you be willing, can you help in that way, make that a right turn only?
Yes, if, if that's going to help the development and, and alleviate the congestion of traffic, I'm not opposed to that at all. Thank you for the suggestion. We actually thought recessing the entry 12 and a half feet with a de-acceleration lane, incorporating a sidewalk, okay, that doesn't exist currently, should, we hope, mitigate a lot of the concerns that have been voiced about, as you say, taking turns, left or right out of-
Because the study is specifically saying westbound traffic. It did not mention anything about eastbound. So, even the study itself was assuming, based on this, that you would be turning right.
Right. No. We're, anything to make a process of improvement?
Okay.
We're, we're for that.
Okay.
Through, through the chair. Just to get clarification then, one of the recommended conditions is no left-hand turn out. That would mean two right-hand turns out.
Okay.
Oh.
So, I want to, if you don't mind, ask your traffic engineer to come up-
Yes.
And just see if that's going to cause any unintended consequences. I just want to make sure it's not going to create any unintended consequences.
Two lanes.
Okay.
The traffic-
Lauren, we ask you to come back up and address the question.
Can I just clarify which left turn we're prohibiting?
I'm sorry?
Out.
The left turn, out.
Out of the development.
Correct.
Onto 12-mile.
Right? Is that clear?
That's correct.
You know what? A left-hand turn out.
And if you can picture, if you've got, going east, yeah.
Going east, okay. You could. I would not suggest that it's a dual right out, just for traffic, safety concerns of a dual right. You tend to end up with a lot of side-sight crashes where people don't really know which lane they're supposed to be receiving in.
Okay, that's, that's through the chair. That's to my point about, right now, there's two lanes out.
Yes.
So, if you prohibit one left-hand turn, that only leaves you two right-hand turns.
With one, yeah, that would only leave you with one, right?
So, your recommendation would be if you prohibit left-hand turn, that we limit it to only one right-hand turn out.
Correct.
That's what I wanted clarification on. You don't see any other unintended consequences for making that a condition of approval?
My only other potential thought is that people who want to go left and who are not familiar with the area will turn on the first available street and then turn around.
Which would be Inkster if they're going west.
Or Sheridale.
Or Sheridale.
Okay.
So, allowing, allowing attendees to make that decision, which, I mean, if I'm, if I'm coming out of there and I see it's congested and I don't feel comfortable making a left turn, I just probably won't do it, right? And I'll go right and I'll go up Inkster and I know I've made that decision to do that. I think we can all think as drivers. That's, that's one thing we all have in common, most of us drive. So, I just have a hard, I, I don't know. I, I guess to your, to your question, if you prohibit the left, you would definitely only want to make it a one single right turn lane. And that would be my other-
And, and from what I heard from the residents, they do turn right coming out anyway. So, I don't know what, what-
Right.
Their suggestion to them would be-
I mean, one of the things that happens in, in this section is that you have signals that are fairly close spaced. You have the signal at Inkster and you have the signals at Northwestern. And ideally, what is supposed to happen in a signal, you know, situation like that is that those signals would turn red at the same time and that would provide gaps in the traffic for people to be able to make, you know, the proper movements in and out, which, yes, you might have to wait several cycles to do that in a peak hour. But that's still not necessarily a failing level of service.
That's just my suggestion, based on what I know.
Yeah, and I think that would be up to-
The residents that's there, if they want to turn right and left or maybe make, make their street a, a-
Okay.
I'm sorry, if they want to make their street right-hand turn only, which from what I'm understanding, they just said that they turn right and go up to Inkster to come around anyway, that would be something else that could happen. But I just know that going across traffic at certain times of the day is not a good idea.
Mr. Fakasi.
You know, let me, let me say this. And I, and when I talk, it's usually from experience. I've lived in Southfield almost all my life. I go up to Providence Hospital, I go to the veterinarian up there. I know there's traffic times when it's, you have to line up and you have to wait, but you know, the, R2 zoning would allow 18, 18 residential lots and those people on 12-mile road could have to make left-hand turns and right-hand turns. There's one, two, three, four, six, seven houses would be placed on 12-mile road facing 12-mile road. So, they'd have to come out of their drive and try to make a right or left. And when they were building the parking lot at Farber School at, at, across from the park, Inglewood Park, they were coming and making right-hand turns and coming in our street, Monterey, and going in the first driveway and backing out and, and going out and turning east. What's going to happen here is they'll turn right, they'll go up to Sheridale and they'll make a U-E there and turn, turn to go left. That's really what's going to happen. They're going to have to put something at Sheridale to say only residents only or something because, I mean, I see it all the time presently. In our neighborhood, our association gets mad as heck about it, but now, you know, the parking lot is in and they're coming out further west, so they don't have to make a left-hand, they can make a left and a right. But, but you're going to have 18, and what does it say here? It says 18 units, 10 trips per day to each one. So, you're not avoiding traffic, you're not inconveniencing anybody. When you have a conference or whatever you have, it's going to be not every day and it's not going to be 300 cars every day, it's going to be different sizes. And, and I'm just looking at, seeing what they've got laid out here, I mean, I don't think anybody in Sheridale would like to see all these residential and, and say, well, I'd like to go, and I, you know, the young lady back there, that she wants to jog down Sheridale, but she won't be able to do that anyway. You're going to have, you're going to have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 houses exiting on Sheridale. And, and according to, you know, they've got a plan here showing if it's residential, what happens and, and if it's like this, what we're looking at, so when you make a, a decision on what's best for the city and the community, you know, you look for landscaping, you look for, for lakes and, and normal nature. And, and, and every day, you're going to be inconvenienced in Southfield anyway, no matter where you go because, you know, what is I-696 and Northwestern- in Southfield anyway, no matter where you go, because, you know, what, I-696 and Northwestern is center of all southeastern Michigan population. So you're gonna get a lot of traffic and nothing we can do about it. That's it.
Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to point out that it's a five-lane road. There's a center turn lane that will ease people egress and entrance to the property. That's all.
One added comment, we are not required by the Road Commission to add a de-acceleration-acceleration lane. We're doing this voluntarily.
And, and I just wanted to, with all due respect to the recommendation which you can add, I just wanted to make sure you fully understood there might be some unintended consequences by requiring one thing might cause a problem somewhere else. And I just want you to be fully aware of the options.
Right. And, and just, we'll try this, and going through this, I, two times I've seen, and the most recent time, and it's on page 202, the proposed use of such character vehicular traffic, and this is from the Plan, Planning Department, Planning Commission, vehicular traffic generated will not have an adverse effect or be detrimental to the surrounding land use or adjacent thoroughfares. That's one sentence, and I did see in another part of this particular package, that after a certain period of time, the traffic will be reevaluated. So at this, this seemed to be a safeguard in here, if, if there are some, some hiccups and or unintended consequences. We have it documented that this traffic will be reevaluated at a, at an appropriate period of time, and I'm assuming reevaluation indicated corrective action would be made.
And I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but we try to look at the worst-case scenario at the worst time.
Right.
Most of the, most of the conferences are gonna either be late morning during the week, or it's gonna be on weekends when you don't have as much traffic congestion from rush hour traffic.
Okay.
And we, we try to, we try to mitigate, you know, those issues. The other thing I just wanted to point out that I brought up with the Planning Commission is under the current zoning, a religious institution, a church or synagogue could go in the same location and have the same amount of parking impact than, than this, you know, is similar to this size and volume of, of a facility.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
Question, and I, I like Councilman Taylor's suggestion about limiting a left turn out of the development. I think that I would vote for having that as one of the conditions. But looking at the unintended consequences that could happen on Sheridale, is it possible, this has nothing to do with the development, but just a question, to put up a sign that says, you know, private road, or even not allow a, a left turn from Sheridale onto 12 Mile to help with some of that reoccurring issue?
That wasn't an issue that was raised during the Planning Commission. Sheridale is a public road, it's not a private road. And it would really be subject to the Road Commission and their jurisdiction allowing some type of sign like that, and our city engineer allowing a sign. But this is a public road, and so, I mean, everything's been talked about putting a gate on Sheridale to prohibiting non-residential traffic, but the fact is, it is a public road. And we, through the Planning Commission, try to have them to focus on safe-in, safe-out, proper site distances, the acceleration-deceleration lane, and to work with the Road Commission is, is probably a better situation than trying to put a sign up that really isn't gonna do anything. Because then it gets into enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
And, and again, I, I think right from the get-go, we didn't want any access to Sheridale. This is not paved, paid-for parking, where people are gonna try to save a few bucks and park on the local road and walk in there. And the fact that they're gonna have onsite security and make sure people don't stay after, you know, the hours of operation, we, we really tried to seriously look at all of the reasonable concerns that the residents had with regard to traffic. And at the end of the day, it's, it's ultimately gonna be the Road Commission and qualified traffic engineers that are gonna make those tweaks to make sure that it works properly.
And then, another question, which I don't think was, was answered, that was asked by one of the residents, was about having a wall as it relates into the-
Sure, that was another legitimate question that came up through the Planning Commission. And here's the trade-off. If they have 50 feet or greater setback, and one of the concerns was trying to preserve the natural features, a wall is not required. If you put a wall in, you're gonna be doing substantial damage to the natural vegetation because you're gonna have to put the footings in, clear enough room to put the wall up, and then that allows the developer to be able to build right up to the wall. So we took the approach of, let's try to preserve as much of the natural features as possible and add additional evergreen trees for screening, and try not to impact with grading and other development, the natural buffer that's there. So we, we did look at the wall versus the landscaping, and we erred on the side of trying to preserve as much natural buffer as possible and then implement additional landscaping. Ultimately, if you wanna make that a condition, it's just, then they gotta, they gotta grade and clear and remove all the trees in order to put the wall in.
Yeah, and, and I'm fine having a, a buffer that size, especially if it's with trees and shrubbery and everything else. And, and even looking at the setbacks, they're, they're more than doubled the, the required setbacks, which I think is more, more than sufficient for, for those types of concerns. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, we, we've been talking about whether or not you have a left turn coming out of the, out of the development or not. And because there is a, a turn lane, a five, five lanes with a turn lane, you're gonna have left turns anyhow, because anybody coming from the west of the place, whether they're coming down Inkster from north, from Northwestern, or south of 12 Mile, they have to make a left turn to get into place. So they're battling traffic that's coming west on 12 Mile with the people that are gonna turn left, so if they can make it in, can probably make it back out again. Especially when they leave, they'll be in the right-hand lane going west anyhow. But it's, and I don't know how you can prevent no left turn, because then people have to go all the way down and turn, make a U-turn down at, at someplace west, east of the place and come back, so. I think that's an argument that can't be won no matter how you argue it. So it's gonna happen either way. Is it?
Ms. Morris.
And just to address the concerns of the residents on Sheridale, you talked about the street being a public road, but couldn't the residents petition to make it a private road, or isn't there a process for that if they wanted to do that?
The reverse is more true. I mean, right now, it's a, a public road, so the city would have to consent to, to give it back.
But they could do that, that's what I'm asking.
Well, there would have to be, it's a public asset. I mean, I don't think you can just give a public asset away. That also means they would be, if that were done, they'd have to be responsible for their own maintenance, snow removal, pothole fixing, so that's another factor. Why would they wanna, again, usually it's the opposite. People have a private road and they're asking the city to take it as a public road for those, for those reasons.
Well, they're concerned about the traffic flow. I'm just, you know, thinking if they're getting money to fix up their windows, maybe if they wanted that road to be private, they could use that to-
There is a process to vacate the road, and as the city attorney has stated, then they would be responsible for the maintenance of the road itself, as well as the plowing and sweeping and so forth, and the city would retain the easements for any utilities to go through if they're, the repair. There is a process, but I don't, I don't know long-term if that makes, you know, the best sense.
Okay. Council, what is your pleasure?
This would be just on the special land use right now.
The special land use.
And I have a list of recommended conditions.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve PSLU-17-004, special use request. And the conditions, Planner, I'm gonna ask you to cite the conditions that we've talked about and-
Sure.
Okay.
I'll, I'll read those in the record.
Yes.
And then if you wanna add that additional condition, if there's consensus, you, you can do that at that time. Well, I'll wait for the support.
Right.
Do we have a support?
Yeah, support it.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Ficassi, that we approve PSP-17-004, special use.
Okay. Resolve that PSLU-17-004, special use request of Scott Riddle, for the development of Conference Center in Banquo Facility located at 27150 West 12 Mile, be approved for the following reasons and conditions. Approval of the rezoning request, PZR-17-003, to rezone the 7.695 acres of land to be to planned business by the City Council. The submitted special use with the conditions recommended by the Planning Department and the Planning Commission will be in accord with the spirit and purpose of the Southfield zoning ordinance. The location, size, intensity, and periods of operation was listed, is designated to eliminate any possible nuisance likely to emanate there for adverse occupants of nearby permitted uses. Proposed uses of such character vehicular traffic generated will not have an adverse effect to be detrimental to the surrounding land uses or adjacent thoroughfares. The proposed uses of such a character intensity and range on the site so as to eliminate any adverse effects resulting from noise, dust, glare, dirt, odor, or fumes, and the proposed use will not be adverse to the promotion of health, safety, and welfare of the community. There are some additional specifics under site plan, but these are the special use conditions.
I would also like to add that within a three-year period that the traffic study be done again to make sure that Item 5 is, is still viable. Because if we don't put that in there, it, you know, they promised to do it, but time can go by and that, you know, and not, would not be done.
Okay, so just-
It's okay with second.
So I've added that.
Okay. It's, it's been moved and second, and with the listing of all the detail.
Would it be appropriate to add in the no-left turn?
Well, again, if there's a consensus, we can add that as, as a condition.
We have to vote on it.
Yes, separate, have to be separate.
I'm not, I'm not warmed to the no-left turn because it's gonna happen anyhow. I mean, you can't get into place without making a left turn.
And we're gonna do the traffic study.
It's just the left turn out.
Pardon?
It was, it was just a left turn out, it's not a left turn.
But the traffic's not gonna be any different going in or going out. So if it's possible to make a safe left turn going in, why wouldn't it be possible to make a safe left turn going out?
Because when you're turning in, coming across, you're only going across those two lanes. Going out, you're going across four.
But you're going out and you're gonna get in a turn lane, and you're gonna-
If it's available.
Just like you do all the rest of the city.
But only if it's available. I'm just, it was just a mandate. Only if it's available.
This is all part of the discussion.
Yep.
But you don't cross all four lanes unless there's an opening. You cross two lanes, you're in, in a turn lane, you find an opening, and then you move over into the center lane. If you're gonna go south on Northwestern Highway, you, you necessarily get over to the right-hand lane and make a right turn, when you get down to Franklin Road.
That's true, but the lanes on 12 Mile are going down. They're, you're going from four down. So you know, you don't always have that two, you're going into one. That's my suggestion.
That provision is there that we will have this traffic revisited within-
Well, that's what, what's been introduced.
Yeah, and that, and that's a proposal, that's what I, well, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Frazier did, you know, we're gonna revisit this in three years. So if there's a problem, you know, in three years, we'll make a change. I mean-
Sounds good.
You let, it's not a closed deal with the traffic, you're-
And the Road Commission at their discretion can make, make changes at any time, but they do it routinely every three years.
Yeah.
So it'd be no more than three years.
They stated in there that they would be, the traffic would be looked at again. So I think traffic is, is a fluid issue and it will be visited.
Okay.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Amendment, is a vote on the amendment?
Well-
The motion on the floor.
That, that was part of it.
The amendment was made-
Made by Mr. Frazier, supported by me.
Supported by you, so that's what's on the, on the floor for, for vote.
Right, that's just on the table.
Yeah, it's a motion.
All in favor?
The roll call.
Well, I guess we better do a roll call this.
Roll call.
Cruz. To be clear, we're only voting on Number 8.
Yes, correct.
At this point.
Yes.
Please state Number 8 again.
The traffic study will be done within three years.
That's in addition to the first seven.
That's right.
To the first seven.
Okay.
Number 8 is added to the-
Right.
The first seven.
Cruz.
So we, so, we're doing all eight or just eight right now?
All eight.
Oh.
So the seven I read plus the amendment saying that the traffic-
Well, wait a second, wait a second. The eight is a new one.
Right.
Yeah.
But you've added that to my seven, so that's what's on the floor.
Supported by-
Okay, if you wanted, okay.
Supported by Mr. Ficassi.
Because-
Go ahead, Ms.-
You sure, you sure?
Nobody, because, no, no one made an objection to the first seven.
Nope.
There could be an objection to the number eight, because it was proposed and supported to add one more condition. No one, no one challenged the first seven.
Well, there was no opportunity.
Pardon?
There was no opportunity, there was no oppose.
There was an opportunity, there was no oppose.
Oppose eight.
Are you talking about the eighth one too?
Well, seven.
All right, well, let's just do that, we're gonna vote, we're gonna vote on eight.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I'm, I'm fine with that.
The item number eight.
No.
Which is to get a traffic study within a minimum of three years.
They're not all, they're not all, we're not voting on the entire resolution.
It seems to me it was part of the motion-
It was.
-to approve with the eighth one added, is kinda how I heard it. So I guess if somebody didn't agree with the eighth one being added, they might vote no on that motion-
Yeah.
-because they didn't agree with the eighth one being added, because it kinda got combined by the motion.
That's what was on the, that was on the table.
Okay, I didn't want to throw out, I didn't want to throw out the whole, the whole motion.
Well, that could happen. If somebody didn't agree with that, they might vote no, and then we could try another motion if-
Okay.
If this motion fails.
Okay, that's another way to do it.
So eight, all, all eight items are included in this motion.
That's the way it was presented.
Yep.
That's the way it's presented, and we will do a roll call now on the-
Here's the opportunity.
P, P S, P or PSLU?
PSLU.
I'm looking at-
It's PSLU-17-0004. This is a special use request.
That's what I read into the record.
Yes.
This is special use.
Mr. Frazier.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay, all right. We're looking at PSLU dash, PSLU-17-004, special use request.
Cruz.
No.
Ficassi.
Yes.
Frazier.
Yes.
Morris. No. Taylor. No. Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Brightwell.
Yes.
All right.
All righty. Are we doing a site plan now?
Right.
Yes. Okay, so the public hearings are concluded. I'm just gonna read into the, the, the site plan is P S, P-17-004, site plan review request of Scott Riddle, on behalf of the owners for the construction of a 20,000 gross square foot conference center in Banquo Facility with associated parking located at 27150 West 12 Mile. Scott, one thing that wasn't, through the chair, wasn't really talked about, if you wanted to just show the building elevation?
Oh, yes.
Under the site plan?
Just click it forward?
Yes.
Okay. Forward, back, forward, there we go. We don't have the finished board here, it was presented to the Planning Commission early on in earlier- early on in earlier meetings, but we are looking at limestone block that you see at the base. We're looking at ACM panels, aluminum composite material panels, and a tinted low E glass for the material for the exterior of the building. We're looking for a kind of a timeless design that'll look good today and fresh and current, but also kinda give it a timeless quality in its design that'll look good even 25, 30 years from now, inappropriate.
And if, if there's no other specific questions on the site plan, I'm prepared to read the conditions of approval for the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the site plan PSP, what's-
I'm just gonna read the recommendation.
After, after the-
Yeah, 17-0004, site plan review, the request of Scott Riddle.
Bored.
Been moved by Mr. Focassi and supported by Mr. Frazier that we approve site plan PSP 17-004, site plan use.
And if I could, resolve that PSP 17-004 site plan review request of Scott Riddle on behalf of the owners for the construction of a 20,000 gross square foot conference center in Banquo facility with associated parking property located at 271-50 West 12 Mile. Be approved for the following conditions. Approval of the rezoning request from PZR 17-003 to rezone the 7.695 acres of land to be to planned business, and PSLU 17-004 to allow Banquo facility use on the property by the city council. Approval of the final detailed landscape plan by the planning department prior to city council review of the site plan. The petitioners to provide a sprinkler system for landscape areas to encourage preservation of plant materials. The petitioners to execute a perpetual maintenance agreement for landscape and parking areas, both on the site and in the right-of-way, which includes maintenance of the stormwater detention system. The petitioners to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. The building is to be constructed in accordance with the submitted elevations shown on sheets A102 and A202 with the lower height. Approval of this site plan and/or building elevations represented herein does not constitute nor guarantee approval for signage. Separate approval and signed permits must be obtained from the building department for any proposed signs. Exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage of glare onto adjacent properties. Bike racks shall be installed, installed in accordance with Article 4, Section 5.29, Subsection 12. The site shall be designed and developed to contain public works of art in accordance with Section 5.22-5 Public Art, Article 4 General Requirements of the Zoning Ordinance, unless exempted based on written stipulations. Approval of the site plan by the city council will constitute approval of a tree removal permit. Waiver of a 40-foot of building setback, 50 required, proposed along the east-north property line adjacent to the proposed building. Lot combination from the assessing department to combine four lots into one lot. The recommendation is made for the following reasons. The submitted site plan with the conditions recommended by the planning department and the planning commission will be in accord with the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. The location, size, intensity, periods of operation as defined is, is designed to eliminate any possible nuisance. The proposed uses of such character and vehicle traffic generated will not have an adverse effect or be detrimental to the surrounding land uses or adjacent thoroughfares. The proposed use is of such character, intensity, and range on the site so as to eliminate any adverse effects resulting from noise, dust, dirt, glare, odor, and fumes, and the proposed use will not be adverse to the promotion of health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Counsel? What is your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I move that we approve PSP 17-
There's a motion already on the floor.
Pardon me?
It was already a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, that's, I got it written down here too.
Right.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, the waiver of 40 feet?
Yes.
Do you have to go to zoning board of field?
That's correct.
Okay, so, the whole thing can be scotched if-
Well, if, if the waiver was denied, then we'd have to come back and deal with that particular issue.
Okay.
But Scott, if you could go back to the site plan? Do you mind giving me the pointer? It's in our nature as planners, we do not like to recommend waivers unless there's some compelling reason why. In this particular case, we're talking about the waiver from the side yard setback here. The building has been pushed as far to the east as practical. This whole area is existing woodlands. So, what we try to do is get the building as far away from the property owners. If they were to comply with this 50-foot setback, that's just pushing the building closer to Sheridale. So, in this case, this is a waiver that we would recommend that the ZBA consider granting, and that's the only waiver that they are required to have. So, it is subject to the ZBA granting the waiver, and for whatever reason, if the waiver was denied, they'd have to modify the site plan.
Okay.
Counsel? We'll do a roll call on this.
Cruz?
No.
Focassi?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Morris?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Mandabom?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Okay.
It has been approved, site plan. The next item on our agenda is communications, and I would like to read a comment here on the protocol for communications. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual. The, the city council will listen to all comments, but may not respond on the meeting. Comments may be referred to the city administrator for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked to mention persons, are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator before coming to the council. Additional rules regarding public comments have been established by the city council and may be found on the city website under the city clerk's page. Your cooperation is appreciated. We will be coming forward, uh, in the near future, all these items are listed on the, under the city clerk's web page. The first individual recognized would be Mr. Gerard Mullin. Please give your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Recommend that he stop and say that he complains, I tell him the screen is up.
Okay, just hold on until, until the screen goes up. Mr. Mullin?
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield City, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. The Southfield Local Officers Compensation Commission's determination for 2017, which contains raises for both the mayor and this council, is in effect null and void. Why? Well, because of a legal screw-up made by both the mayor and by this council. Let me explain. This fall, the mayor appointed Alan Watson to the Local Officers Compensation Commission, and council approved Mr. Watson on October 16th, 2017. And three days later, Mr. Watson participated on the compensation committee, and then voted on and then signed a determination, that is, the pay raises for both the mayor and this council on October 19th, 2017. Sad to say, Mr. Watson illegally participated on the compensation committee by voting on and then signing the, the committee's determination. Here's what makes Mr. Watson's actions illegal. Under Michigan law, the Home Rule City Act, that is, Public Act 279 of 1909, Section 117 5C, Subsection A, regarding local officers, Compensation Commission appointments, which I have a copy of here in hand, and I quote from the act. Members shall be appointed before October 1st of the year of appointment. Unquote. Mr. Watson was appointed on October 16th, 16 days past the October 1st deadline. Yes, a deadline of October 1st, a deadline set by state law and also by city law. The October 1st deadline is set by City Ordinate 771, reflected in Section 1.176, Subsection 2 of the Southfield City Code. Not only was Mr. Watson belatedly and therefore illegally appointed, but also three days later, Mr. Watson illegally participated on the compensation committee by voting on and then by signing a determination, which I have here in hand with Mr. Watson's signature. Mr. Watson's illegal signature, making both the mayor's and this council's raises null and void. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number's 248-346-0439. Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee. This past Friday, the mayor had an inaugural state-of-the-city, um, visioning session. Um, I was happy to see that members of council was pretty surprised about all of the stuff that was talked about for the mayor's vision for the city of Southfield, cause it clearly wasn't a council, an administrative, a resident, or even an employee visioning session. But, you know, this document here was presented, that you guys were going to do what they call governing, guiding according to 2005. I read this document here, my six-month-old great-great niece could have written a document better than this. This is a very juvenile, reading at best of what a governance guide is supposed to be. But what really got my attention was this document here that talks about the mayor, city council, and administrative goals for 2017 to 2019. So, I'm looking here, and under one of the bullet points, you have staff. It says nothing about negotiating employee contracts, police and fire. It talks nothing about getting the employees' input on what they would like to see. You guys are making a whole bunch of plans, and you don't even run, or the mayor doesn't even run, the day-to-day operations to the city. The charter says that the mayor is a ceremonial mayor, and I'm still trying to figure out why, in the charter, Section 5.5, Subsection F, that he's a ceremonial mayor, that you guys just can't seem to get it. Now, it seems like Cyver is trying to be a Duggan-style mayor or Detroit-style mayor, so if that's the case, since you guys wanted to get rid of our treasurer and use accounting services, maybe like Plant Moran, you wanted to appoint the treasurer, you wanted to appoint the clerk, maybe we can get rid of the city administrator, let him run the show, we could save on his money, we don't need a city attorney, cause Farmington Hills doesn't have one, and we can really consolidate. You guys are just missing the boat. There's nothing you can do to make this city have a great vision if you don't deal with your employees first. And the mayor and Frazier and Nancy Banks stood on the steps of city hall with the McDonald's workers for $15 an hour, what about your workers for lower insurance and better wages and a contract? Can you do that? What is all of this?
Shut the mic off.
It's still on until I get through talking. I'm done.
Mr. Person is not available. We are next, Mr. Gilliam. Set it for 3 o'clock.
Go to it. I'm Charlie Gilliam, elected delegate precinct 20 of Southfield, Michigan. Um, I would like to first say happy holidays to the council and to the city hall of Southfield. Um, the first time I held a loaded handgun in my hand, I was about six or seven years old. Uh, my dad said, he, he gonna lay his stuff down, and he dared anybody in that house to touch that thing, he ain't gonna move it. And, and he said, you, you in big trouble if you touch it. Well, when he went to work, pulled the blind bag, watched the car turn the corner, the red back brake light go down the street, couldn't see it more. My hands was all on that thing, all on that gun. So, what, uh, the holidays are coming, my grandkids are coming, my nieces and nephews are coming, my grandnephews and nieces are coming. So, some years back, about a half a decade back, I went to the Southfield, uh, Police Department right, right across the aisle here, and I, I applied for a 10-day permit, and that's some of the best information Southfield gave me. You know, while they're checking me out, they gave you a little quiz. If your girl come up missing, how long do you have to report it? A year, a month, a week, three days? I think the answer was three days. They let me know, you got three days to, to find, know where that gun at. Is it under the sofa pillows? Is it under the pillow in your bed? Is it in the closet, in, in your, in your wife's boot? Uh, new shoes, snow shoes? Um, is it in the backseat of the car, under the baby carriage? Uh... Or is it simple, I hid in the toilet box, cause I don't hear no grandkids come over but once a year. Um, I'd like to talk about, uh, next to, uh, you know, the, uh, property tax. It's due, and I, I command my treasurer, the first month it was in my bill box. And it said, read carefully, what nobody really never read on the back, explains about payment, and it's in good detail. It says how long you got to pay that, and, uh, when it's due, and when they can't take it after so many months, if the pay is due. I came down here today and paid mine, you know, and, uh, the treasurer wasn't here, but his, uh, second-in-command was here, and them some nice people with it all, nice and polite. They're not like, um, you know, in the army or something, down until I get to you, uh, you know, no, but they're nice and polite. And I asked a question, how do they know if I'm, if I'm delinquent, I'm behind? Well, they said, it'll be right on the top of the page, you know, to tell you behind. And, 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 uh, you know, the money they take up for, it's not just for Southfield, it's for the zoo, the art museum, the smart buses, the county parks, up in Pliny, the jails, the court system, uh, the Oakland County Parks, uh, the state ed, rubber pickup, Southfield schools, it's not just for Southfield. Thank you, my time's up now.
Mr. Keeler? Mr. Greg Keeler?
He's coming. He's coming.
Is he coming? Oh, okay.
He's coming.
Greg Keeler, Southfield, PO Box 2058, Southfield, Michigan, 48307. I would first like to thank Officer Carden, um, because I had told him there was a vehicle parked in a handicap and parked across all three lanes, and he went out there and seen the vehicle was parked that way, and it was after 6 o'clock. And so, he said, there is a problem, so he gave him a ticket, because he said code enforcement was gone at the time. So, I'd like to thank him for that. Um, what's happening in Southfield? So, we have this calendar or this booklet we hand out to people, and on the back of it, it says when trash pickup is done, picked up, and when trash pickup is ended. So, two of the members here, I had their yard signs out in my yard, and I told both of them, I said, my trash has not been picked up. Sitting in front of your signs are my leaves and everything else. So, I need to know, is this correct, or is it every other week, every four weeks, every five weeks? Please explain when it's gonna be picked up, because it's not picked up every week. And that was, that's one of the problems. Second thing is, I've had, since we got this new trash company, I've had to replace my garbage can twice. I then bought a metal one. For some reason, they seem to think my garbage can is here, it should be thrown up there where you're at. Why should it be thrown in the middle of my yard with all the snow out there? There's no sense. I don't need to be treasuring through 12, two feet or a foot of snow to get to my garbage can. When they drop, all they gotta do is pick it up, drop the can lid off to the side, be done, I'm happy. Second thing, I spoke to the city clerk the day I dropped off the form to come speak before you, and I asked her a question. I said, "Between 10 Mile and 12 Mile on Telegraph, where can you cross the street if you have to go to the grocery store?" Because there is a senior citizen building right there. My buddy Walter, who used to live, he's gotten struck seven times before he passed trying to cross the street. So I asked her, "Where can you cross the street at between them two miles safely?" And she looked at me and said, "Cyril, there's a problem." Because that day it snowed, and me and her had talked, two hours later, there was an old lady walking across the street, trying to make it in the snow, and she had to walk out on Telegraph itself, actually. So I just happened to look up and see her out in the street and avoided hitting her. But Walter got struck each time in the crosswalks, not in the middle of the street, in the crosswalk by Telegraph and 10 Mile, because people are speeding, trying to make that right-hand turn onto 10 Mile from Telegraph.
Thank you. Mr. Keeler, with respect to your trash pickup problems, could you sort of make a list of them and give them to the clerks so they go, they will go to the administrator? We are obviously keeping track of complaints dealing with the trash pickup.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. That concludes our communications. Now we are going into the council session.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mandabom.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the travel expense for Councilman Cruz.
Support. Been moved and supported by Mr. Mandabom, supported by Mr. Fraser, to approve the travel expense report for Mr. Cruz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Mr. Cruz abstain. The motion carries. The mayor's session.
Find out if there's anything else.
Thank you.
Counsel, anybody else?
Yep. I just wanted to say happy holidays to everyone. It'll be New Year, by the time we meet again, so happy holidays to everyone. And I also have two announcements from our human services area. They have a Skate for Cause on Wednesday, December 27th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and they're inviting everyone to come. It's free admission. You just pay for your skate rental. And they also have the Expungement Clinic going on on Monday, January 8th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Southfield Library for everyone that is a resident of Wayne, Oakland, or McComb, and individuals with two misdemeanors or one felony. You're welcome to come and talk to a legal aid person, free of charge. They say that the ICHAT fees will be waived. So again, that's Monday, January 8th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the library. And the other one, Skate for a Cause, is Wednesday, December 27th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Southfield Sports Arena. Thank you.
Mr. Mandabom.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor stole some of my announcements, but that's okay. Last week, I had a chance to do a ride-along with our street and highway crews as they went and plowed some of the streets in Southfield, and it was a very educational experience. And I think that if any, you know, if you could, I'd encourage the other council members to go for that ride-along, and you really learn how hard it is and how difficult it is to clear the roads. I rode along for about three hours. I stopped at 2:00 a.m. because I got, started getting tired. But it was a lot easier clearing the roads, obviously, that late, since there's no traffic. But through that experience, I just want to remind homeowners and businesses that you are not allowed to plow your street or your sidewalk and dump it into the city's street right away. I believe there is a fine that you could have if you end up doing that. There were many times we were plowing 12 Mile, for example. A lot of the businesses along 12 Mile had their businesses being plowed at the same time, and we would go over one spot, we'd come back on the next, going east and west. We'd come back, and there was a big pile of snow right in the middle of the street, which makes it more difficult to clear the street. And to the citizens, you also be patient. We have 246 miles of road to plow, so it does take a little bit of time. Sidewalks, the city has an ordinance, sidewalks have to be shoveled 24 hours after the snow has stopped. Not only is it the city ordinance, but it's the right thing to do, it's a courteous thing to do. I know I walk through the neighborhoods frequently, and it makes it very difficult, especially when I'm with my children, going through snow that after so many people have walked on it, can become ice and very dangerous. So please be courteous. We don't want you to have any issues with code enforcement for not shoveling your sidewalk. Last, certainly not least, for those who are celebrating Hanukkah, happy Hanukkah, as we're currently ending that celebration, and then also Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa to all those who's celebrating, and have a wonderful evening, and a try to stay warm. Thank you.
Ms. Morris.
Yes, in concurrence with the fellow colleagues here, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa to all of our residents listening tonight, and praying for peace and prosperity for your family in 2018.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes. I would offer a suggestion for people that are shoveling their driveways and sidewalks, especially the driveway. We quite often get complaints that, "I just finished having somebody shovel my driveway or clean out my driveway, and along comes a city snowplow and covers up the end of my driveway again." My suggestion is shovel your, at the curb, shovel upstream for a decent distance, so that when a snowplow comes along, there's, they run out of snow, so that they don't cover up the end of your driveway. That will solve part of the problem. The other is, Mr. Mandabom talked about the sidewalks need to be cleaned within 24 hours of a snowstorm. He sort of hinted at it, but it is the responsibility of the adjacent landowner to shovel the walks. It's not the city's responsibility to shovel those. It is the homeowners or the business owners' responsibility to clean those walks. And I have seen with our last snow, people walking in the street, and in fact, one of the people that came to the podium talked about, they saw someone walking down Telegraph Road because their walks weren't shoveled. So it is a safety factor, and you should make sure that the, that the walks are clean in front of your, your property. I would also like to say Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, sort of tardy, but Happy Hanukkah for those that celebrate. And for everyone, I wish you a safe and happy holiday season. We'll see you next year.
I too want to wish everybody a happy, good holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and be joyous and peaceful. And just as a note of explanation, I come out of an environment where we made the rules and we gave the orders, so I'm getting adjusted to Robert's Rules of Order. And as we go through that, we will be a little more efficient with the protocols that deals with Robert's Rules of Order. But everyone have a very joyous holiday season. We are now dealing with the treasurer. I'm sorry, the mayor. I'm still getting used to this.
It's okay, Mr. Bradwell. I just want to comment briefly on the Bar 7 situation, that I have heard from many residents by phone as well as email regarding their concern. And we've, are, as was discussed in the study meeting this evening, we are taking steps to begin the process to seek the revocation of the liquor license for that establishment. There isn't a person here that is not appalled by what has happened there, and I appreciate the concerns and the opinions of the people that contacted my office today and Saturday and Sunday. This is not what I call the Southfield standard, and it's something that we're not going to just allow to happen here. So it may take a little while, because there is due process for the revocation of a liquor license, but we will pursue that process. And on a happier note, I would also add my holiday, best holiday wishes to all. Thank you.
Administration?
Mr. Chairman.
Just one second. Go, Mr. Facassi.
I'd just like to state this. I know the mayor covered it, but, you know, that was one of the things that we discussed thoroughly. It can be the whole, and the chief was here to clear up what happened and how it happened and what they're doing, and we have made that under the consent judgment to take an action. I'm glad you brought it up, Mayor, because yesterday we had a concert at Highland Park Baptist Church, and a lot of people came up to me and said, "Hey, what's going on in Southfield?" And, you know, it was really sad, because, you know, newspapers pick it up, newscasts picked it up, and, and these people do not live here, they don't work here, I don't think. You know, they come in here and gang up, and, and we get the bad name. And I just, I just want to, like I did yesterday, said, "You know, we have a safe city. We can't be everywhere. We can't be sitting on everybody and making sure that they obey the laws and they stay out of the city. They're free to go wherever they want." I, I just think that we get blamed for a lot of things, even though our crime is down. And I guess I also want to wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, and all the other good things, and we're all now ready to listen to the treasurer.
Mr. President, could I, could I just clarify? That we're starting, by the resolution with respect to, to the liquor license, we're starting a process envisioned by the ordinance. Obviously, there are no predeterminations made how the council will, will vote on that. Obviously, as the mayor indicates, there is due process. The establishment owner has the right to come in to that hearing and present whatever evidence, and certainly all of that is taken into consideration by the council under the protocol of the ordinance, and, and then you'll make your, your determination. So all that's really been determined at this point is to start a process to see where we end up.
Thank you for that clarification. We would now go to the administration.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an item that we just received at 8:02 this evening. Those of us on the Northland Committee have, are aware that we've been waiting for a proposal from DTE, that we've been waiting for a proposal from DTE to proceed with the decommissioning of the electrical service at 21125 Greenfield, known as the former Firestone facility. And I apologize, it's a little unorthodox. We were trying to get the proposal all last week. It just came at 8:02 p.m. tonight. If I may, I'd like to read the letter into the record. This letter is in reply, it's, it's from DTE. Construction proposal, date, December 18th, addressed to myself, from Anthony Forham. Subject, method of service for 21125 Greenfield, Southfield Road, Michigan, 48075. This letter is to reply to your request for an estimate cost to decommission 21125 Greenfield, Southfield, Michigan. I appreciate the opportunity to provide the following information based on our previous discussions, assumptions or background. The city of Southfield is requesting DTE to remove underground cable that is currently servicing 21125 Greenfield in preparation of demolishing the site. There are currently two circuits feeding this site. Scope of work, remove DTE underground connecting to 21125 Greenfield, remove 600 feet of cable, break down two branch joints, break down one transition joint, install two straight joints, clean and abate three manholes, pull cable from conduit. The cost is, the total cost for the removal due is $72,038. Expiration date and formal go-ahead information contained in this memo is valid for six months. No capacity will be reserved after the six-month timeframe unless an official go-ahead memo is received to move forward with this project. Please make the formal go-ahead memo to my attention and address, address it to Anthony Forham. Once the formal go-ahead has been received, I will coordinate a pre-construction meeting with your electrical contractor and our primary service field personnel. In consideration of this, and we try, I was hoping to receive this last Thursday, last Friday, and we made a couple last-ditch efforts early this morning, and we've just received it, I'm asking council to, and I just drafted this resolution, that council adopt a motion to concur with the city administrator's request to authorize the mayor and clerk the authority to sign the proposal with DTE to proceed with the decommissioning of the electrical service at 21125 Greenfield, Southfield, Michigan, former Firestone Service Station in an amount of $72,038, with a 10% contingency not to exceed $79,241.80 with the expenditure to be charged to the Northland contingency account. If you recall, we've got about a little over a million dollars in that contingency account.
Mr. Chairman, I move with the recommendation of the city administrator on this DT energy bill and construction, removal of these lines.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Facassi in support of Mr. Fraser, that we approve the construction proposal from DTE for the site at 21125 Greenfield, Southfield, 48075. It's your pleasure, counsel.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? It carries, no opposals. Thank you.
Mr. President, I appreciate that. I know it's not how we normally conduct business with the three-week timeframe, and then this is in a substantial amount of time for DT to mobilize. Just on behalf of myself, the administration, and the employees, we do want to wish the entire community a happy holidays. We celebrate the season of light, be it Christmas, Hanukkah, or Kwanzaa. It's a time about being together with your loved ones and your families and finding your faith and setting ahead a plan and goals to move forward into 2018, and we look forward to serving the community in 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Attorney.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll finally get to you, Mr. Treasurer.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President and honorable counsel. This evening, I present before you the annual update of the city's investment policy. It was in conjunction with the city's investment advisor, Robinson Capital, that we conducted an annual review of the city's investment policy. It was presented to the City Council Finance Committee for their review as well, and four recommendations were, were made, four updates that we should be doing. One is to, because of the rising interest rate environment that we're facing right now, the Federal Reserve has raised interest rates three times this past year, and, and upcoming 2018, the expectations for another three-interest rate rises. In a rising-interest rate environment, the, the risk is for longer-term investments for, for our bonds that potentially will see potential losses if we lock ourselves up for a long term. And so to protect ourselves, we're trying to look at shorter-term investments. And so one of the, one of the uses that we can use is CDs, certificates of deposit with our municipal, with our banks in Michigan. And so one change is to allow for up to two years with our CDs that we invest into. The other update was more of a procedural one, was, highlined was the original rating service that we were using for bank ratings. that we were using, uh, for bank ratings. And instead, Robertson Capital has a bank rating service that, uh, the recommendation from the city council finance committee was to use a score of B minus or better, uh, for the bank ratings of investable, uh, banks that we can put our money into, as well as also updating, uh, the ability to go into municipal securities of up to 50%. And, uh, to allow for that, also, we have to update one other section, which, uh, said that right now the limit was 25%. It'll go up to 50% for any non-US Treasury or agency obligations. The municipal securities have to be a rating of AA or better, which is, uh, comparable to the city's quality of investments. And they're going to be safe, and, uh, and we're going to investigate carefully before we do any investments into those. Our investment policy has been ranked as, uh, one of the best, uh, by the Association of Public Treasurers in the United States and Canada previously. And, uh, this will allow for a strengthening of the policy. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. President.
With the recommendation of the city treasurer.
You move? I support.
I don't know whoever made it.
Mr. Fakasi, moved by Mr. Fakasi, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the update to the city investment policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It carries.
Thank you very much. And also, on behalf of myself and, uh, my staff at the Treasurers Department, we want to wish everyone a happy holidays and, uh, best wishes for a great 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have nothing to schedule. Ordinance?
It's okay.
Madam Clerk, you have anything to present?
I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays on behalf of, uh, my staff, and, uh, everybody stay, stay safe during the holiday season, that's all.
Mr. President.
Yes.
One more item. I just wanted to, uh, right now, the big news out of Washington is the revisions that are going on right now to the, uh, potential, uh, changes to the tax codes. One of the big changes that right now is on the table is regarding the deductibility of income tax, uh, of, of state and local taxes. Um, and so, right now, it looks like there's going to be a limit of $10,000 that will be allowed. Uh, so that is going to be after 2000, uh, the start of 2018. So, uh, we allow for anyone to pay their, their winter taxes. They could pay it up until December 31st. And even if it's dropped in our Dropbox, uh, before we come to, to work on the, uh, the next business day after the new year, we will mark it paid as if it was December 31st. So you could deduct it off of the previous year's taxes. The previous year's taxes have no limit to the deductibility. So anyone who's in the higher tax, uh, situation will be able to deduct their taxes if they can get it paid before December 31st.
All right, thank you for that tax advice.
I'd like to make a comment. I know you said that the limit was $10,000. But they were negotiating that it was only in the high state, high-tax states that would be allowed to $10,000. I don't know that it was across the board, that the limit was $10,000. I thought it was only the, the few states that were high-tax.
Um, I'm not, uh, the way I read it was that was $10,000 was the limit that was determined, uh, as negotiated. And they didn't discriminate one state versus the other. It was basically the, the higher-tax states were going to be negatively affected, because unfortunately, they have property taxes over there sometimes that are 10, over $10,000 over there, and they're much more than what the average homeowner pays in, uh, in Michigan. So they have also a higher local tax. Uh, they have cities and state taxes, which, such as New York and New Jersey, they pay very, very high taxes. California as well have, uh, very high combined. If you take all those together, the state, the, uh, and the local tax and, and the property tax, you, you're looking at well over $10,000. So they're the ones that are going to be negatively affected in a bigger way.
Yeah, and so I thought that's the amendment that made, that they made, only for those states. But I could have read it differently than you did.
The moral of the story is consult your tax preparer.
Of course.
And consultant.
Yeah.
Okay. Assessor, not here. The engineer. We move to, nothing to schedule. Ordinance is, we need to enact.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1685.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, uh, supported by Mr. Frazier that we enact ordinance number 1685. What is your pleasure, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Ordinance 1685 is enacted.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1686.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and, and supported by Mrs. Morris that we enact ordinance number 1686. What is your pleasure, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It carries. Ordinance number 1686 is enacted. And I'll, I'll get rid of the word, your pleasure. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good holiday.